Welcome, whoops, thank you.
I always do that, yeah, alright, press to talk, alright. Welcome, everybody, this is the October 21st meeting of the Lake Forest Park City Council Committee of the Hall. And my name is Tracy Ferratani, I'll be facilitating this evening. The, I guess. First order of business is public comments, so I'll read the statement briefly. The committee is not accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the deputy mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. And Mr. McLean, do we have any public comment?
There's no one in the audience, so no.
Alright, well, I will close public comment at that point, then.
Yes.
Do you want us to approve the agenda?
Um.
It's not on there, but we.
That's fair.
Have in the past.
Okay, let's do that, then, alright, so I hear a motion for.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Alright, any comments? Okay, alright, all those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
All those opposed or abstaining? Great, thanks very much. Agenda is approved. Okay, so we have three items of business. We'll start with the first and go in order, we actually have, I believe, some guests coming in. Okay, so, yeah, alright, so the first item is the 2024 Lake Forest Park Comprehensive Plan Update. And we have our guest Christina Hayworth, representing SCJ. And I think, so I want to set some ground rules about how we're gonna do this. Those of you who've seen on the council packet, the proposed changes, there's a lot of them. And so we could spend weeks, literally, basically going through each one of these individually. So I was thinking that perhaps we concentrated on the ones that seem to have a little bit more meat and controversy to them. And then if anything gets skipped, you're always welcome to jump in to basically address that particular issue. What do y'all think? Alright, okay. Alright, so we'll start with the housing update. Oh, and hi Christina, thanks for coming. Okay.
Good evening. Would you like me to share my screen so this can be an interactive session?
That would be great, thank you very much.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, there we are, okay, thanks. Okay. Okay, so it looks like. Trying to see if your comments track ours.
They, they should, I sent an excerpt of this. So what, what I'm sharing on my screen is the, the full compiled version of the plan. I excerpted the housing element and the land use element for tonight's meeting. So you should, you should have all of the track changes and all of the comments as shown on this screen. The comments include, in some cases, responses from myself or from David at Leland Consulting Group that provide a bit additional information for you all.
Alright, thanks. I guess basically this point, since I've got only the packet that has the goals and policies and looks like you're starting off from the beginning, oh, sorry.
The introduction, this is the introduction to the housing element.
Okay, thanks so much, I have just had.
Sorry about that.
We're good, we're good, thank you. Alright, so, so I guess the first, you know, after that introductory comment which has been addressed, I was looking at goal H1 and the first set of comments and responses about H1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And the response, the person who, I don't know who proposed the comment, was it addressed?
Now you're doing it for me, thank you. No, this summer, mostly I was trying to just sort of identify all the goals. And so one of my comments, I think, earlier was if, under, at the introduction, if there could be a small table of contents for the, the goals, because then I can see them and see what is being covered. So this was like, I was just making a Cliff Notes for myself, like, these are what's in this section, so I could see them clearly. I think the only thing that was more of like a question. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it was just that, and just. I'm, I'm happy with it, I just, I'd like to see all those headings in one place.
And has that been done?
Not quite yet, I think that's, could be, that's just a systemic comment throughout the document.
Alright, yeah, because I think there's a comment back from whoever DF is about, do anything, does, is anything out of place or need a moving?
Um, not once I really got into it. That was sort of like, I was wondering at the beginning, but then I actually kind of went through it, and I think, I think it's done right, now that I've had time to noodle.
Does anybody else have a comment on that? Alright, then moving on to the next page.
And I did just want, I'm sorry, I don't wanna.
Go ahead.
I mentioned land use in two places, and I know that the, the response is that, yes, housing and land use are very tight together. But I was just curious if the language felt like, in this case, under the introduction, it was the housing element identifies land to accommodate different housing types. But I don't think we're really identifying the land here. So it's like, to me, it's, I just don't, I want it to be clear what this section is, and that the land use section is the land use section. And yes, they do tie together, so this gives you the types of houses that need to be accommodated in the land use section. Kind of like in my brain, it goes the other way, and I don't mind it being here. I don't know if anyone else has any other concerns along that line.
When I look at this, it looks, I'm not clear, it looks like they're opening up. I think some of our citizens might consider this opening up a big can of worms, and it will lead to just rampant development wherever. And I don't know if anybody else sees that, but when I read that, that's what I take away from it.
Which specific policy?
I would say the H-1 dot 2 provide an adequate supply of land through zoning and development regulations to meet the city's housing growth target as established in the King County Countrywide Planning Policies. So.
It might be, it might be more appropriate to call this an allocation than a target. Logic is, let me get my. That's something that I tried to update, and it looks like I missed one. But then it seems like less of a, like, we're trying to specifically achieve these allocations or targets versus we're trying to accommodate the potential for this growth, if that feels a little bit better.
Possibly. It just seems very open-ended when I read all of this, it seems very open-ended to me, and I, and that, I think, would concern me, and it might concern other citizens.
Yeah, and that's noted, you remember that bubble diagram they were showing where basically the King County, County Policies are here, and our comprehensive plan is within that bubble? So I, I like Christina's phrasing of that, because it is a allocation, it's what that plan said that we should plan for. Now, whether it's exercise or not is anybody's guess, of course, but.
The developers will read this, and they'll go like this.
I think the thing to remember is this is that 20-year plan. We still have to actually make changes to our code to make things buildable, and that's where we come in and temper that amount of development to match the community needs. So, and, and, and we don't have to start out with high rises everywhere, like, it's, we have, we have 20 years to hit these targets. And so this is sort of just that big vision, and, and it's matching the language, I'm pretty sure of, of some of, you know, of what we're being asked to do, told, told to do.
Well, if, if that's the case, then maybe a scale as to, you know, quantities per year, or I don't know, something that is, that's measurable, because right now, this is immeasurable to me.
Yeah.
Well, we can continue to think on that and see what kind of appropriate language there'd be, so. Okay, anything else on this page? Alright, so on the next page, basically, the comment CH10, I'm not sure what's meant by flexibility, and then flexible, and then the response flexibility in regulations could be many things. I'm wondering if the person who made that comment feels that that word has been adequately defined.
That was me, and yes.
Well, thank you very much. Alright, Chris, Christine, did you have any comments?
My response, as well as David Fisk's response, are both in here. If there are any edits that you'd like us to make to incorporate any of this response into that policy language, we can certainly do that, but if you're satisfied, then we're also just as happy to leave it be.
I appreciate your accommodating us on that, and I think I will mention to council then, rather than try to wordsmith the document here, if you have any changes you would actually like to see show up in the document, if you could send them to me, and I'll make sure that it's noted and given to the, given to SCJ.
I had, in a couple of these, it refers to small apartments and other types of middle housing. And I think we have a minimum number of types of middle housing that we have to accommodate per the law. I'm wondering if like, that feels like it's too open-ended, kind of, I think. I don't, I don't, because people think apartments, and they have a very specific thing in mind, and small apartments in the middle housing world, I, I, they're just not used to it, they don't know what to imagine it to be, I don't know what to imagine it to be, to be honest. So I'm wondering if that really is part of what we want to include in this. I think duplexes, townhomes, stacked flats, I think those are the more appropriate items that we'd be suggesting. But again, those specific suggestions will come next year when we actually do the middle housing. But.
Yeah, I think David's comment just says that you could use the multiplex or stack flat terminology if it's more appropriate.
I, I would recommend not unless there's concerns from other council members.
Alright, anything else on this page? Go ahead, council member Lebo.
Thank you, I'm looking down at, I think it's, it refers to where we have on policy H-1 dot 7, Black Indigenous and People of Color. And it's not clear to me if we're retaining that or changing that. And I just maybe a brief discussion about the intent of that.
Great, so Christina, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, so I did get a number of comments on the specific policy. I had a direct request to remove Black Indigenous and People of Color, and just leave it a little bit more broad with the, the term communities of color. That's a little bit more consistent with how we've treated the terminology in the rest of the document. So that is reflected here, because I did get a very direct suggestion to make that change. Also, happy to revert. Just let me, let me know if you'd like to keep the, the BIPOC descriptor here.
So my question is, is there a generally preferred approach? I don't have a, I don't have a bias one way or the other. They, although the Black Indigenous and People of Color is very specific.
The Black Indigenous and People of Color description is sourced from our overarching policy guidance with Department of Commerce, with PSRC, and with King County statewide planning policies. I think, I think this might be the only instance where we kept that language versus, at, at Planning Commission versus changing to this communities of color version. We think that communities of color will still be acceptable, but it is not a direct reflection of our policy guidance, which does typically use Black Indigenous and People of Color.
Does the communities of color adequately include the indigenous population?
That's a really good question, and I'll, I'll be frank and say that I, I don't know the answer. I am, I'm not indigenous, and I, I don't know enough about the nuances of that specific question to even really comfortably hazard a guess, so I will need to go back and do some additional research on that.
Thank you.
I have a question, if, if it's, if it's normally accepted, or the other term, why would we change it to communities of color?
This was the reference of the Planning Commission. I think that it was seen as a compromise that acknowledged all viewpoints in the room. You might, you might have recently reviewed the cover letter that was forwarded with the recommendation that explained some of the challenges in approaching diversity, equity, and inclusion, and this was the outcome of some of those discussions.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I'm okay with leaving the original BIPOC. Just because I feel, I mean, it does include and people of color, so it's kind of, to me, it seems to cover a larger range of those that have been negatively impacted over the generations. That's my preference.
I, well, I think that it, what I'd like to see then, i- if, is what is the actual definition of communities of color? What does that mean? It's, I am not clear by that.
And one other element, as we're looking at this, is bringing, if we want to introduce the concept of renting into this as well, because just providing these opportunities for homeownership, one of the great things about this is you can have rental facilities that are, you know, townhomes that would be giving access to people who have been disadvantaged in the past. So is that something, Christina, that adding renting on there, would that be a problem?
In, in my opinion, it would be. The intention is to create more homeownership opportunities because of the way that allows people to build equity and wealth, and because of how it can affect generational wealth. So the, the intention is very specifically to support previously disadvantaged people to enter the ownership market.
And, yeah, in fact, policy H13 specifically addresses the ability to have rental units as well. So I think, yeah, the intent of this particular policy, I agree with Ms. Hayworth, is to really encourage homeownership in the building of generational wealth.
So the reason I raise this is I want to make sure that as a policy that we are respectful, and this is not an area that I am very knowledgeable in. So I just want to be careful that we're not somehow missing the opportunity to recognize groups that we otherwise might be not appropriately recognizing simply by communities of color. So I'd love to have a recommendation.
I appreciate that, council member Lebo, and so Ms. Hayworth, would you be, would you be able to research this a little bit more?
I, I certainly can. If, if you need a recommendation immediately, then, you know, my, my personal recommendation would be to default to the language used in our policy guidance. And that would be reverting in this instance, and perhaps other places in the plan, to Black Indigenous and People of Color as the descriptor.
Because I have the same issue with, that council member Good brought up. Am I a person of color? Because under BIPOC, in some instances, I do fall that way, in some instances, I do not. So, you know, it just, it just punts the question to a different level, so. Anything else on this page, everyone?
Well, because communities of color, that leaves out, I mean, is white, are white people communities of color? So I don't know what, that's why the definition would be the other, the way that it's, it's clear to me.
Any other thoughts? Okay, I think we'll table this one until next time.
Okay.
Anything else on this page? Alright, I guess we'll move on to the next page, then. Saw a few things here, first is, the first blue comment, it's a response to a previous comment, but the question is basically whether or not there should be a new policy around incorporating regulations to minimize the effect of extensive investment, non-rental properties. It, was that addressed?
I mean, there, there was, there was a proposal for it to be an H3 in the housing affordability, which may make sense, except, again, the H3 is looking, a lot of that's looking at the, you know, 30% below AMI, it's kind of focusing on that, where this is really going into the, you know, when investors purchase and hold properties, and maybe they don't rent it out, maybe, you know, they're holding for, or they're Airbnb-ing exclusively, and it's only being occupied one week a month, and now we have this housing stock that's not available for people to actually move into and live here. And so that's been an issue in Vancouver, BC, and a few other places where they've struggled with this. So I'm not sure if that's an affordability thing, as more as it's a quantity thing. It's creating, you know, limiting this creates more quantity for opportunities for people to buy a house or to rent long-term in a home.
When, I think that when you take the ability of a homeowner's, I mean, Airbnb is a way for someone to, you know, it's their property. And that, I think that if you're restricting something like Airbnb, then that impedes on somebody's ability to do something, so I'm not so sure how that would really work. Because that's like, you know, the government is telling you what you can do with your property. Or somebody's telling you what you can do with your property, you don't have freedom to make your own decision. I'm just not clear on how that would affect that.
So I guess the question is, do we want this proposed policy 3, H3.12 that's suggested in the blue box at the bottom?
I, I think we can start looking at it there, I mean, I'm just, I, I will, I will defer to the, the team, if, if this really is a housing affordability issue as much as just a housing quantity issue, or if you're tying, essentially, those two things mean the same thing as, as far as this document is going. But I appreciate adding it somewhere. And if, if 312 is the place, then that works for me.
Alright, is this another one we put in the parking lot and think about for a bit? Okay, yeah, it sounds like there's different nuances to this, and I want to have everybody have a chance to think on that, so put a box around that. Okay, so the next one I saw was down CH22. Is it even possible to add requirements and not create additional barriers or add cost to new housing development? Fair question, I don't know if it was addressed in any particular way, would, does the person who made that comment want to comment?
Yeah, so that was me, it just, it feels like, yeah, it just feels like, how, how can that even happen? I mean, you add more regulation, it's inevitably some kind of barrier. As you were saying, if we add regulation on, on Airbnb rates, then it's, you know, it's another layer that people have to worry about. So I don't know, I don't know what we're trying to get out of that statement, I guess that's the question, is what is that statement trying to accomplish?
So I, I'm hazarding, it's, it's, I believe the arrow leads up to policy 2.1.
Does, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I think that goes all back to what do we want these new potential developments to look like, right? And I don't know if, so I'm gonna defer to Ms. Hayworth on this, is, is cost something that can be addressed here?
At a, at a policy level, you, you could add some additional language that commits the city to considering potential implications related to development, costs, costs to develop in, in this case. I don't think that the comprehensive plan is the right place to specifically address cost. You could also, you could also leave it as it is and create some implementation actions that stem from this that focus on reducing costs associated with regulatory compliance.
Thanks, and so what, what does everyone think of that? Maybe not saying, you know, bluntly about the costs, but to basically suggest that we make that a consideration?
Yeah, I mean, I would, compliments surrounding uses, considering, you know, the challenges of additional barriers or increased costs to that new housing development. Something along those lines, I think I'd be happy with. That way, we're just considering it, but it's not like saying, it's, without is such a strong word.
To me, when you get, when you get in, in the middle of cost, you know, somebody, if somebody has to build something, it's gonna cost them money, and how can you, you can't expect somebody to go beyond their means. So it's almost as if there is a restriction on what the profit would be in a way. That's the way I see this, is like, because it costs what it costs to build something. And so if you're coming, if you're saying, okay, I'm gonna build this, but it has to cost this, then how, how will anybody build anything?
I mean, I think that's why we need to consider the cost, because if these are cost prohibitive to build at all, then we're not taking advantage of.
Or you're, or you're, but, or you're putting in what the ceiling of profit margin would be over the cost would be, if you're going that direction.
I mean, and, and a lot of our regulations, they're restricting what you can do. I mean, exceptional trees, you just, you know, they, they can't get as big a building as they'd like, but they can still get a building, and that's, so we're okay as a regulatory body. So there are things that are gonna limit that, and I just, but I just don't want to hold us to this, this overarching policy that we will, without creating additional barriers or increased costs. There's, I, I don't even think there's any way we could do that, and we've got a.
Yeah, I think I'm reading 2.1 differently, and then I'm reading it as emphasizing clear and predictable, that we don't want developers to be surprised halfway through a project. And so it's about having clear, predictable, standard guidelines that they know what we're expecting of them, so they can design their project accordingly.
If we were to take out that last half of the sentence and let the clear and predictable be the more important, you know, portion of that, and then it's just to integrate infill development with consideration to form and scale the complements surrounding uses, period?
I'm, I'm fine with that. That we, that we just use this period, strike the remainder. The reason for that is that there's always cost considerations whenever we have development regulations, and so that's something that we need to take into account and balance it.
Because again, this is not specific legislation, but guidance, so, yeah, okay, so it sounds good, did, Ms. Hayworth, did you get that?
Can you just read it back to me so I don't?
On policy H2.1, strike everything after without. After uses, sorry, yeah, including the without, right?
Yep, so that, second to last line there, complements surrounding uses, period, and then we'll strike out without creating additional barriers. That makes sense?
Yes, I'm sorry, I am surrounding uses, there we go. How many times can I read it? So delete this highlighted section, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one I saw was comment CH twenty five. Where would buffers be? For example, I would support buffers between residential and commercial uses. Do we need to address that? Did the person make the comment? Has that been addressed?
Um, yeah, the response about that higher, basically it's explaining what higher intensity uses means, that it would be commercial or multifamily. But it wouldn't be middle residential. So with that context, yeah.
So no new language is necessary? Thanks. Okay. And then the final one here is on policy H two point four comments CH twenty eight, consider deleting or revising. No context. So I'm trying to figure out what, what somebody was trying to get out of this.
I don't know what it really means. I mean, it looks like. I don't know. I'm not sure what that means to a homeowner.
All right. So what does everyone else think? Could retain, omit?
I also found two point four confusing. So I'm not really sure what it's adding.
Are we good with admitting it?
I can't, well, I think if, I think what it's trying to say is like, if we can retain and remodel existing housing stock rather than tearing it down and building new, that we that would be, is that kind of what it's trying to say?
Administrator Hill has a comment.
I'll just jump in here just from experience. When you have C D B G funds or other funds that a city may retain, a lot of cities will put into place programs for low interest or no interest loans and grants in commercial areas, residential areas to maintain the housing stock, to fix it up, to, you know, try and keep a level of development. And so that might be what this is alluding to, that, that is an opportunity. So just to maintain it and keep neighbors looking good.
I think if that's the way it's understood, it should be written that way. Because that's, that's a lot more clear than what this is. This looks like they can make you fix your house up if you, if, if it doesn't look good. That's what I get from that. Like somebody doesn't like your yard. That's what it feels like to me when I read it.
How about we, the goal is to retain this language and maybe just to clarify. Because I think there is value, of course, being able to maintain existing housing stock and not let it run down because the city may not be providing the infrastructure improvements that are necessary to support that housing stock, whether it be roads, sewers or water.
I agree with you. And I think if we can move like through a public and private investment to the top, that might actually make the point where, you know, nobody's making you do it, right? But if we can get money from the feds, say, right? Yeah.
And maybe instead of enhancing the condition, we're supporting the condition, we're, we're enabling the ability for houses to be. Whereas enhanced feels like we're, again, maybe we're requiring them to do it. But unless we're funding the money, that seems like we shouldn't be requiring it. So maybe there's just a better verbiage. You know, supporting existing neighbor codes, you know, through, through or support, public and private investment.
Or supporting parentheses via blah, 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 blah. Grants.
Yeah.
So Ms. Hayworth, do you have enough to redo that one?
I think so.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe something like that. I can show this. So it would read kind of like this through public and private investments such as grant funding, support homeowners in the maintenance and improvement of existing housing through.
My only, I, I don't know if we need grant funding. I mean, because it could be anything in the future. I mean, when.
It's an example.
I mean, as an example, I think we want to be as an example, but is that us providing the grant? Is that C D B G? It just kind of feels like it's, this is twenty years from now. And twenty years from now, what will, what will be, you know, where will that funding come from? We just don't know.
What about if we put the word available in front of it?
So through available public and private investment? It's, it's, it's kind of not necessary. It's not like we're going to go ask them to get unavailable public, private. I think just the fact that it says through public and private investment implies that it has to be the ones that are available at the time.
We could just get rid of the example.
I think, I think so. So.
Okay, everybody kind of okay with that one then? Okay. And there was a comment CH twenty nine that was essentially, were there any missing policies here? I think there was just a typo there, right?
Um, I, I think, oh, I, I'm not entirely sure if somebody was hoping that there would be something else here.
There was, that, I kind of had a missing policies sort of just in my brain here. So I was thinking about policies that regard the urban forest as an important part of our neighborhoods and, and, you know, as we look at this, the neighborhood form and scale, the forest is part of that form and it's part of that scale. So I, I don't know exactly how that policy may read, but I mean, continuing to enhance and respect the urban forest through these developments, I think is, is important to be able to, to log into this comp plan.
Do you, do you like this proposed policy H two point five that David has provided in the response?
I think we, our, our condensed print is missing a lot of the comments because
I see.
They're, yeah, so it didn't come through on the PDF. So I will look at yours then.
Okay, yes, this, I'll, I'll read it for, for everyone. It says promote housing that reflects varied architectural styles and configurations that lessen impact on the urban forest.
I don't think that's getting what I was hoping for. So I had two comments for missing policies. One was around, you know, preserving our urban forest. And the other one was around trying not to end up with these giant square McMansions everywhere. You know, and I, I, I'm not the best comp plan policymaker for how that might come, but there's, I don't know how else to describe that, but I can't just say, don't make giant McMansions.
That's actually, it seems to be H two point six.
Yeah. So two point six, consider regulations and size and lock coverage of single dwelling housing to provoke, promote a more efficient use of residential land. I don't want more efficient use of residential land. I want more.
Right. But you can change that adjective, right?
Yeah, I suppose. And then as far as, yeah, for the urban forest, it's, it's, it's integrating housing into the urban forest. In my, in my opinion.
All right, if in the interest of time, let's, we just saw these. So let's just put them in the parking lot. And Ms. Aworth, would you be able to send those to us? Because as, as Councilmember Riddle pointed out, it was cut off in our copy.
Okay. The, the clerk should have the word versions that could be circulated and you should then be able to find all of the comments, I think. Or I can separately send these to policy proposals to you, Councilmember Ferratani, to distribute.
I think we should do both just to be on the safe side. All right, thank you.
Sure thing.
All right. I don't have anything else on this page. Is anybody else? Go ahead.
I would just offer that I would like for us to stay away from design review. I don't think that in the long run, that's the thing that we either want to be doing as a council or as a planning commission is somehow judging whether your house should be a different style or trying to regulate it. So that's just a first, personal perspective.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Lebo. And we'll take, I, I think we're, we're, we're not going that direction, are we?
I think there, there was another area where we talked about design regulation or something else. If I recall correctly, but this is just, that might be in land use.
I, I would offer that in, for example, proposed policy H two by promote housing that reflects varied architectural styles and configurations. Again, I don't think that we should. My personal perspective is that the city should not be in design review. We should be in regulation, compliance with the codes and development and not consider whether or not your purple is the right shade of purple.
I agree. I think the two point five needs to be focused on the forest or the trees, for the houses, rather than the houses. Because I agree, I don't think we need to be that detailed, especially in a comp plan policy.
Okay. Oh, anything else?
I would just mention that in the email that Jessica sent us all on Friday, there are Word document attachments and those Word documents have the full visible comments rather than the truncated version.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldman for pointing that out. So yeah, I think emergency solved. All right.
Great.
Okay, moving on to the next page then. There is policy H three point six comments CH thirty three, consider deleting. Does somebody want to speak to that?
That may have come from a council member that's not present tonight.
All right. Does anybody have any comment on this one? And that council member did not give any kind of justification?
I copied and pasted the comments indirectly. So this considered deleting was the extent of the comment for, for policy H three point six.
To me, this also looks like a planning responsibility. I mean, it, it has to do with design. And if we don't want to be in design, then I think it should be removed.
I mean, we, we enforce energy efficiencies through the energy code, which is continually getting more stringent and stringent as we move along. So far, I don't think the city has really done any changes to those codes that would add on additional regulation. Other than I think the fire code is the only thing we've touched. Everything else we just adopt as is. So I'm not sure when we would ever use this.
Right. We, since we've adopted twenty twenty one codes, all of this is in that. So I don't think, I think that H three six should be deleted because it's already in the code that we've adopted.
Okay, so I think I'm getting some head nods for deleting. Anybody want to do a counter to that? All right, I think we can delete that one then.
Done.
Anything else on this page? Okay. Well, there were no comments associated with it. So I don't know when that was made. So, yeah.
Are you asking about policy H three point eight?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that, this edit was also suggested in, by city council in the review of this document. I believe this was also suggested by the council member that is not present tonight.
All right, we okay with that? Okay. All right. So goals H four and H five, there are many comments, but there are responses. So it seemed, oh, go ahead.
There was just one topic from H three, and that was if, if there's any interest in specifically talking about affordable housing in the, you know, fifty to one twenty or fifty to eighty AMI range, because it's either kind of just overarching housing affordability, or it targets very specifically the, the low income. And I know even in that fifty to eighty range, we are in a deficit of units per what we've been told we have to have as targets. So I'd like to see something in there. I just didn't know exactly what we, what we would say, something about attainable housing versus affordable housing that is is, is more addressing workforce needs rather than low income needs is kind of the, the topics that I just don't know how to formulate that policy specifically, but something about maintaining, you know, attainable, maintaining and increasing attainable housing for workforce to encourage, you know, people to be able to live closer to where they work.
I think when I was looking at the housing counts of the different kinds of stock that we have in the city, we were down on all of them. So your policy would be addressing a very specific slice of that, correct?
I mean, it, we are from the zero to thirty, thirty to fifty, eighty to, I guess, one twenty, and then above. We have just tiny little slivers until like the last three, but I can't remember exactly what those, I think it's the zero to thirty, thirty, fifty or, and then fifty to eighty. So yeah, I think, but most of this is really talking about like that zero to thirty type level, which is also where we have our permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter, I think, or just permanent supportive housing in that category. So I don't know, I just felt like we should be more specific that we want to make sure that we continue to encourage and welcome workforce housing, you know, priced housing in the city.
Would it be fair to address those three sectors that we are in fact low on?
Yes, I, I mean, I, I do want to address all three, but the low income has kind of like, there's a different route home access there. You're going to get subsidized housing and things like that. But when you're looking at the workforce housing, you usually don't have programs that assist like that. It's literally, can you afford the house or not? Whereas low income, they do get that extra help to be able to get still into a very low barrier, you know, low, low, low barrier, low priced housing, but they, they need help. And so you end up with this group in the middle. Our police officers, our librarians, they, they can't live near where they work. And so I just want us to recognize that those are areas where we're deficient per what we see every day and what's in the GMA requirements and just incorporate a policy in here on that.
Ms. Hayworth, have you seen other language and other comp plans that say something to that effect?
Um, I don't have a great example that comes to mind, but I know that workforce housing and some of these other kinds of housing are, are big concerns regionally. I would bet that David and Andrew from Leland would have some language to suggest on that specifically.
I mean, if there's an opportunity for us to add it maybe to policy H three point five and say forms of affordable housing and attainable housing, and then add attainable housing as a definition in the document.
Yeah, we could do something like this with attainable housing.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And so I think H three point five is covering basically what I'm looking for is expand access to homeownership forms of attainable housing in a wide variety of locations, types and sizes. So yeah, if we could just add attainable housing to that line, I'd be happy.
And define it.
Yes, and then the definition.
Okay, then moving on, goals H four and H five, there were many comments, but there were responses and they seem to have been incorporated. So I'm okay with moving forward unless somebody has a comment on those.
Just for the, for the group here, I'm just trying to suss out sort of the language, right? Just to make sure that we're being accurate and. I'm just trying to assess out sort of the language, right? Just to make sure that we're being accurate and, um. Sort of special needs versus. Like inclusive housing, like is there a better way for us to speak of this? And the only, and then the other place where I think I had a little concern. Is, I know incentivizing locating like special needs housing, like near services is great. But special needs housing can be anywhere in the city. You can have, uh, someone who's taking care of their elderly parent and needs to have a wheelchair access. And it, or, you know, and they, they, they need to have, be able to get onto a sidewalk or whatnot. So I wanted to. Instead of incentivizing, just kind of supporting it throughout the community is really what I was trying. So that's been updated here. I just wanted to. Anyone has any concerns, speak now.
Right, I think we're good on, uh, H then. All right, so, um, in the, uh, what is it called? The, uh, company has to plan emergency housing land capacity and code changes. I was just wondering, uh, on the, uh, page three. Uh, which is our packet page fourteen, I guess. Um, there's a comment that's kind of grayed out and I wasn't sure if that was still a thing. Or if, uh, that's been incorporated.
Let me check your, I want to make.
All right, thanks.
You said it's page fourteen of your pocket.
Right. It's page three of that part.
I see, okay. So we provided some new housing material. These were prepared. Um, I, I don't. These were, there are two new documents, new analyses that were attached to this packet. Um, as we were wrapping up the planning commission recommendation. Department of Ecology reached out, uh, and let jurisdictions know that some additional analysis. Specifically related to what they're calling step housing, which is the emergency shelters, transition, transitional housing. Permanent supportive, supportive services, um, would be required as part of this update. Um, so. This is, this is new information. It's entirely focused on. In, in the case of the document that you are looking at, um, it, it's focused on the, uh, emergency housing. Um, and so this. Uh, you're showing a surplus, uh, and you would not need to make any specific. Changes.
Okay, thank, thank you for the clarification. All right, so I guess we, we can move on then. All right, so. In the land capacity analysis methodology and results, I didn't see any comments, so skipping that then. Going to, um, then land use itself, LU. Um, the first two comments, um, having to do with, uh, the land use designations being confusing and should be clarified and streamlined. Uh, would, I think there was more than one council member that probably said that, um. Uh, you notice that the table I one has now been, uh, modified substantially, uh, does that address your concerns? Those of you following along at home, it's page thirty five in the packet.
And I believe I've caught up to you on the document on the screen. Um, and let me just, let me explain a little bit about what's, what I've got, um, in your packet. Uh, so I did provide some information about. Land use intensity, uh, under policy LU one point two. If you prefer to retain the changes shown in the table, I don't think we need this additional information. Um, it could be removed, uh, because in the land use designations table. Um, the, the comments that I got were we have too many of these. The intensities don't seem very meaningful. Uh, and it might just be better to simplify the residential ones. Um, so we would kind of do away with the, the relative intensities among the different densities. Uh, and just have conservation residential, low density residential and multi-unit residential, which would be the, the higher. Higher density residential. My personal recommendation would be to go with the simplified land use designation's table and just ditch the intensity. Signifier and that, the, the definitions that I suggested above the table.
Do y'all think?
I, I always like simpler. So I would be happy with Christina's, uh, recommendation.
Um, yeah, I agree with preferring the simpler option. I still am not thrilled by the language conservation residential. Because looking at our, our zoning map and our critical areas map, I don't see a big correlation between. The zones that would be conservation residential and where our critical areas actually are. It seems that it's more of a correlation with when that neighborhood was annexed into the city.
So I, I was the one that I think, maybe others, but I brought up the conservation residential idea being the larger lots. That the regulations around the larger lots would preserve more of the larger lots, you know, so that there's more. That can be preserved in those lower density areas. Um, whereas in the, in the higher density areas, the lots are simply smaller and the houses just take up more of the lot. And so there's less that you can conserve. So that was sort of my introduction of that language. Um, but I definitely, yeah, no, I mean, I'm, I hear what you're saying. Um, we're, we're, for our critical areas and everything else, we are. Doing everything we can to protect all of those areas through those regulations. So this is more of looking at the, the land use is also doing that.
I suspect this also might be a case of, um, uh, poor housekeeping over time, right? So when, when portions were annexed into the city, if they were then later subdivided, and now you've got a bunch of lots. That at one time were large and had environmentally sensitive areas, but those. New lots don't because they're, you know, further away from that critical area. Um, there's still kind of this, this issue of an artifact and not having, you know, taken a close look at your zoning map over time to make sure that. Things are matching, uh, with your land use designations in your comp plan.
Yeah, so I suppose, I suppose my objection is if you look at the description for conservation residential. The last sentence, the one that starts these classifications are reserved. I don't think that's factually accurate. But if we take that sentence out, I think it's, it's reasonable.
Yeah, so, so I had a, for, for when I kind of thought about conference, conservation resent. Residential I had in this designation, residential development shall preserve the highest percentage of environmental protections while providing for a variety. Of residential building types, um. I don't know if that's better or worse, but it was. I think it's leaning towards us not, i- in the next twenty years, not going through and. Z- zoning those to smaller and smaller lots is kind of what I'm looking at. And then the other thing is I'm, would like us to look at. Cleaning up the, you know, the R nine, R ten, you know, the things that are so similar. Um, and simplifying those, but that's kind of another step later, but right now identifying. Large lots should stay large lots and this is why. And when we look at the, back at this in the fifteen years, having that why there is really important. Cause we may not all be on council, so.
So trying to rein the discussion back in, so are we okay with, uh, dropping the intensities? As, uh, Ms. Hayward suggested.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So now moving on into the conservation residential definition, um. Councilmember Goldman proposed dropping that last sentence. Is that gonna do it?
I'd like to keep something in there for environmentally sensitive areas because we've seen by some recent reasonable use permits. That it's caused, uh, a fear amongst our citizens. So we should somehow safeguard. Areas that are critical and sensitive. I don't know how best to do it, but I think it should be there.
Yeah, and I, I think given the where, where middle housing regulations are, I'm not sure that. These that have accessory dwelling units and duplexes doesn't also apply to the other zone. It's just harder, but it would, that would apply to both. Conservation and low density. So I don't know if it's worth calling that as a specific thing anymore.
That's it. Perhaps we do the word, we can do this wordsmithing. I would, I would point out, um, that particular parcel is actually not in the conservation zone. It is in the, it would be in the other residential. So, but I think maybe we could, you know, the specific wordsmithing of what should be in conservation residential, we could, we could send comments offline.
Excellent, so, oh, go ahead.
I, I support the idea of having, uh, conservation and particularly around environmentally sensitive areas. But I think maybe there's just this artifact that we've had conservation residentials and that, um, it doesn't really. Has a zoning apply. I think the goal is that we want to protect our environment and have reasonable, sensitive development. But that somehow we're gonna call, call certain areas conservation residential, I think is kind of an artifact.
So, uh, would councilmembers Goldman and Riddle be willing to work on some of the language on this?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, it may be the case where we just have to rename it critical areas, you know, as opposed to, uh, conservation.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about it.
So, um, yeah, so I think we've addressed the map comments here as well then, uh, so I, I didn't see anything else on this page. Does anyone want to bring up anything else towards the bottom of the page?
I think the only other thing is looking at, um. Is us thinking about the neighborhood business, um, and. Trying to understand, I don't know, maybe it should be neighborhood commercial, because one other thing is I want us to, to, to really understand what our. Um, in-home businesses, sort of regulations are gonna look like, so the, the distributed around in, you know, throughout versus. Having a land use kind of for neighborhood commercial being that. Style of neighborhood businesses that is congregated in one location and the neighborhood business being distributed and it wouldn't be a land use. You know, obviously designation, but.
So this is on the next page, this is on the next page.
Page thirty six.
Page thirty six, okay, great, thank you.
So that's the neighborhood business BN. Um, cause I also want us to strengthen our, our, our. Or address, I want us as a council to address, what do businesses in people's homes that aren't in. A commercial zoned land use, what does that look like and how do we regulate those?
The eleven unit condo next door to me applies in this case because they are. Some of those units have, there, have businesses in them. Uh, there's only fourteen parking spots. And so where will people park? The street is, is no parking. And they want to have an example of some spaces out front. But then there's a total of thirty-three bedrooms. So you would think that there's gonna be a lot more cars than the parking would allow for. So I don't know what the right thing should be here, but this, the, but for example, a lot of the streets in Lake Forest Park are very narrow. And if you have somebody parking on the street, it can pose a safety risk for those other residents on there. I don't know how to address it. But that's what my concern is for residents that, that have home businesses. This should be, you know, my mind to have. Off-street parking, but I don't know how to. Regulate that.
All right, so I think, uh, um, this is another one that we might have to look at more carefully. I, unless, uh, City Administrator Hill, you have a comment on that? No, okay. I was hoping you'd save me here.
I wish I had an answer for you, sorry. I was thinking about in the context of also middle housing, so it can be something we can't address during the middle housing conversation next year.
I would also say that, um, the parking, parking requirements, um. Yes, there are some changes directly coming from the middle housing rules. Um, those things are intended in the case of middle housing to be addressed during development regulations and that would be an appropriate. Place to discuss parking for neighborhood businesses and homeowners as well. Um, having some policy language to su- support it is great. And then your, your development regulations. Will help fine tune how exactly it gets implemented.
Yeah, um, so I would point, if I'm reading the map correctly, that's a couple of pages ahead. The neighborhood business zone is very small and it really applies, I think, to the gas station that's across the, the street. And also the local one oh four intersection. So I think, you know, it kind of raises the question. When we say neighborhood business, are we just referring to those two tiny zones? Or are we looking at condensing in a more general, these are the areas where someone can open up a store?
I think discussing the extent of these zones is gonna be the next regulatory conversation we have. I think we're just trying to define what the zones are at this point, but we do also have zone in the very far northwest corner. Where the cushery is, in the very, very east, we've got a convenience store right up against the Kenmore border. So they are these little pockets and there's like, I think, at least four of them. Five, where's the fifth? Am I missing? One, two, three, four. I trust the mayor, there's five. Um, so I think really it's just the death, like what are we gonna define it as now? And then we can talk about where they are at the next level. Cause. That's a huge conversation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And allied to that was the comment at the bottom of page thirty six, which was. The North Park metal site, um, is commercial as well, but, uh, doesn't seem to be mapped as such, so. There might be some, uh, inconsistencies.
There's also the southern gateway. And that property next to me is the only property that does not face five twenty-two that's in the commercial gateway.
And so I think the only conversation at this moment is, is do we want to rename neighborhood business to like neighborhood commercial to. To highlight those higher density, you know, nodes. And then we can have further conversations outside of this context, because that involves more regulatory, uh, land use code specifics. So is anyone against neighborhood commercial versus neighborhood business?
I, I would just try to see what's generally accepted, um, within cities in terms of how they designate it so that one could have a similarity. I don't know the answer, just that be nice if we're consistent with others.
I, I appreciate that. We'll look into that.
And we don't want to burn in any current business owners with additional regulations, just because we re-zoned them into something else, so, yeah. Hey, um, so, uh, anybody else have any other comments on the tables, the, that, well, that one big table?
I, I will say that I tried to see if there was a way to combine the corridors, but they're all just a little too different. So I looked at it, but it didn't work.
Okay, then, uh, moving on to, um, packet page thirty-eight, which is the rest of, um, LU, uh, policy one. And then, uh, Elliot two, um. I guess, uh, I didn't see anything here. Does anybody want to make any comments about it?
I had a question, I'm trying to remember. Were there any changes? I don't believe there was any changes to the map from the twenty fifteen comp plan. We didn't actually change the, the map, I don't think we did.
Correct, there are no, no changes to the geographic extent of any of these designation areas.
Thank you, just wanted to be clear, so.
So any other comments on this page and the next page thirty-nine, uh, which finishes off LU two? Okay, then we'll move on, um, oh, do you? Okay, so, um, we've addressed the.
Just one thing, and this is just a statement for, for, is we're kind of, can we move as a group, agree to move to, from like pedestrian or multimodal? Into this active transportation category, which is what they call it under the. Complete streets is just a sort of a baseline change so that we match that other language.
Um, I'm okay with that. I, I, you know, I, I don't know if it'll be clear to the residents who are reading it, but, uh, yeah, we, we'll, we'll have to define it carefully.
Yeah, and, and if there is a, a glossary definition of it in safe streets that we could just use. And I think it's a pretty good definition.
Christine, is that a change that can be affected?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, so I think on page forty, there's the map, which we've talked at length about, but, you know, again, uh, there may be some inconsistencies. But we'll just have to update that as that happens. Go ahead.
Is there an interest on, of any of my council members of looking at this map, like the neighborhood business slash corridor, um, or neighborhood commercial, is there any interest in us looking at this map and revising anything? I've heard a lot from community members and people who want to bring businesses here and they'd rather be in like a neighborhood business environment. There's just not enough access. And again, we're thinking this would, it would, this is what it could grow to look like by twenty forty-four. So it's not like saying that it's going to be like, it isn't actually changing specifically our actual land use map. It's just saying this is where we would like to target ourselves in twenty years. Am I the only one that wants to tackle that?
Well, I guess the question is which way it goes. Um, i- if there's inconsistencies on this map to what's actually being done, then obviously those should be addressed. But, um, I don't know, you know, just because we say, okay, change this to green or whatever, um, that will happen.
That, that's kind of our, that's what we do. We say change that to green and it's green.
Right. But do we do, do we do it in the context of the, a cop plan or do we do it? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, Christine, am I correct? Like if, if we want to grow an area in the, over the next twenty years to be more neighborhood business, then we change it in this map. And slowly as parcels are purchased and they, they want to be rezoned, then we get there.
Yes. So to, to make changes to this specific comprehensive plan and future land use map. Now's the time, you could do this once a year. Uh, make changes to this map. This map should then inform your zoning map, which is your implementation tool, right? So if you want to expand the neighborhood commercial areas, you make the change in this map. You make the change in your zoning map and then development can follow those, those standards. So your first step would be make that change in this map now, or, you know, whenever, if you want to take a, a closer look at everything next year, um.
The last thing she said there's maybe we take a closer look after the middle housing next year. And I think that's, I, I'm okay with that. We, we're kind of crunching time here with our budget anyways.
Well, and especially since you two are coming up with the, uh, def- definition of conservation or whatever, uh, yeah, residential. So, yeah, I think.
There's a preview for what I'd like to look at next year.
Um, yeah, I'm on board with that, especially if this is the opportunity to do it. Um, I, I had proposed, I think it's coming in, uh, LU five point eight. I had suggested language for allowing more, like, if someone wants to open up a coffee shop somewhere that is owned residential, you know, what would, because we've heard that from the community. So what would be the mechanism of allowing that? And would that mean, you know, we have splotches of neighborhood business sprinkled throughout, or would it mean that we amend what residential allows? And so I'm asking if now is the time to consider, you know, how we'd want to, if we want to allow that and how, but I, I'm supportive of allowing sort of small neighborhood businesses in more areas.
I think that's a great discussion and I would encourage that we sort of give this back to the planning commission for them to consider because I, I'm reluctant to say, let's go and, um, change the colors of the comprehensive plan with our, with regard to zoning. I think it should be thoughtful and I think it's something that, uh, if we want to do it or consider it, that we should first give it to our planning commission to consider.
The mayor says the comment, I think.
Council member Lebo's point, there's been overtures from the planning commission that they would like to consider additional analysis of what the opportunities were for a sub-area plan for a certain neighborhood business types of situations.
Yeah. And thanks, Council Member Lebo. That's a really good comment. So I think, yeah, absolutely. We'll kick it back to them. Okay, then moving on to, uh, LU three, um, on, uh, council package page forty-one. It seems that the comments were addressed unless somebody wants to bring them up.
Good. Um, so in three point four, I'm not sure that scenic vistas should be there. I mean, I support acts, you know, access to water should be a, a goal. But I'm not sure that scenic vista should be, is big enough to be in the comp plan.
I, I was, I was thinking on that. I didn't make a comment, but it, it does make sense. I don't think we have any scenic vistas that are like recorded at this point. Uh, but we did talk about in the town center allowing, um, public access to the, the higher levels so that the public can have access to views of the lake and the mountains. We kind of started some conversation around like those scenic vistas being protected, but we haven't done any more than that. I'm okay with getting rid of it here since I think we can do it as an individual regulation basis.
Right. Comments from other people? Yeah, I mean, I'm in agreement with you two. Um, view sheds are a thing, but at the same time, um, I don't know that this is a good place to start bringing up that topic. So you're right. I think, uh, it might be one of those things that we also, uh, start having the planning commission about as well.
Very good idea. But so for right now, we're striking it?
Oh, yeah. So the proposal is to strike it. We're good.
I was, I agree with that. I was actually looking up at LU three dot three. And the only thing I had a comment on that is to revert over to planning is that when they're considering neighborhood businesses to also to consider the ambient noise that might come from whatever business that is. So when they should consider the noise aspect along with the neighborhood business.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we're, uh, Miss Aworth, we, we're going to strike scenic vistas out of, uh, LU three point four. Oh, she did?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Moving to page forty-two, goal LU four, um, I think, uh, at the comment at the bottom there, the new item, um, I think I disappeared. So I have no idea who proposed it. Does somebody want to speak on this?
Um, this is something that we, uh, recently allowed through, through regulations to be able to donate, uh, real property, like your actual property. Um, so I think this is really just saying that it worked out really well this time. So let's make it something that we would be interested in doing again. I wouldn't necessarily say standard operating procedure, but this was a wonderful opportunity and it's, it's great to sort of codify it as bring it on if that's what you're interested in.
Yeah. And my comment was that, uh, I've been approached by a couple of residents who saw our example with the Rose property and, uh, were very encouraged by that. So I think it's, uh, I, I, I think it's a great addition to this. Okay, moving to, uh, goal LU five.
I did have, sorry, I did have one comment. I think I might've had some comments that didn't get integrated. So, um, four point two conserve significant natural features. Is that is that okay being vague or is there, do we want to like? What, what are those? I guess, you know? And yeah, I mean, I guess I was just wondering what could those be? It's very vague. And maybe it's meant to be vague, but.
Uh, I think it is. I think, uh, they might mean rivers like or streams in our case, right? Because that's one of our most significant natural features. Yeah. Or for that matter, lakefront.
And I think there's another.
Also, it could include things like, uh, particularly significant tree. Um, some communities would call these like a heritage tree. If there are specific landforms, um, it, it's kind of the whole gamut of natural features that provide a unique character.
Because the other thing that's, that's discussed in many different places in here is this transition between different types of uses. And, and, and I think we just need to think on that as we are, maybe when we're looking at the, the land use map or the, um, comprehensive plan map. Because with middle housing, I mean, that these, these transitions are getting less distinct. So I'm not sure how much that language is going to be important in the future, but right now it's fine. I just giving a heads up that it may not be as useful of a piece of language later.
Point taken. All right. So LU five. Again, here I didn't see anything, um, except for the bottom one, which was adding this new item. Which may speak to an earlier point that we had brought up.
Yeah, I think that does start to talk about what, um, Larry was bringing up, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I would, I would just offer that instead of encourage that we consider because we may or may not really want to do this.
And especially given that we've given it to the planning commission to start thinking about as well. You're right. I think that makes a great deal of sense. Is everybody okay with changing encouraged to consider? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. And so sort of in the interest of time, I'm going to just open up the last three pages of LU here. And if anybody has, who wants to speak to any of the comments in the last three pages, please, uh, cite the, uh, particular goal number.
Um, so under land use, um, seven point two encourage pedestrian scale improvements that focus on color, materials, form and functionality, utility on streets and trails. I'm not, whoever made that comment, I agree with. I'm not sure where we're trying to go with that.
Um, that was my comment and it kind of echoes what Councilmember Lebo said that, you know, it's not up, I, I don't see it as our job to choose the right color purple for a crosswalk.
So I would, I would offer that we delete it.
So, yeah, the proposal is to delete it. Um, I'm okay with that.
I mean, there's something to be said about there being some consistency that we develop a language within our community that is consistent across our trails and so forth. Um, so I would be okay with like considering that because I, you know, something like that will add cost as we go through, but um, I'm not sure encouraging is the right thing, but yeah, I think, I think I'd like us to consider that. Like what is, what is the what is the consistency between all these things that people see?
Maybe we should say that then instead of color, materials and form encouraging, or maybe not encouraging, but what considering consistency.
Consider a consistent language, quote unquote, amongst the pedestrian scale improvements that build on a, 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 a common language and form.
Wouldn't that be in the, in the planning, in codes?
How that comes to fruition, yeah, but just the concept that like we want to create a language across our community. So when someone sees something, it's like, okay, yeah, I know that that's the start of a trail because it's got the same language.
I, I would be, I would be fine with that. So if Councilmember Riddle wants to propose something that suggests that we have a common palette or um, consistency across our city with regard to trails and streets, I'm fine with that.
Right. Okay. Any other, uh, points on the last three pages?
Just in seven, seven, I was wondering, I think this is the first place I've seen cities green resources. I think it's the first time I've heard that term in the comp plan so far. Is that somehow different from? I, I don't know. How would we define that if it's defined somewhere?
Uh, you should, you should have received a glossary, I think with maybe your, your first, um, your first briefing. Uh, we do, we do define green resource. Uh, this is a term that came up sort of is sort of invented during the planning commission discussions and it was trying to capture not just trees, not just streams, not just urban landscaping, not, but, but kind of all of it uh, at, at once. Um, and so it's that's kind of the, the spirit behind the, the term green resource and the, the planning commission did explore some different options, like changing that to green infrastructure, but that has, you know, some very specific stormwater connotations, um, green landscape, but that didn't seem like that really captured some of the, the more like urban, urban vegetation forms. Um, so I guess, uh, do, do with that what you will, but that's kind of how we got to this term and how it's been discussed and used.
Thank you. I'll look for that definition. Okay.
Anything else? All right. Are we done then? That's exciting. Okay. Um, I guess, Ms. Ray, we're thank you very much for being our resource this evening.
Yes, absolutely. Very happy to be here. Sorry for the brief technical issue when I dropped off. Hope it didn't disrupt anything and I'm glad we made it through. I'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you so much. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, moving to item B, uh, resolution twenty-four dash nineteen seventy-three approving the Liz Loomis Public Affairs Professional Services Agreement for Levy Litlith Consulting Services. And I think Administrator Hill is going to talk a little bit about it. Please.
So on this item, I don't have any, have any new information for council. I just wanted to check with you before Thursday night, Ms. Loomis will be attending that meeting. Just make sure that we've answered all the questions you have. And if anything new, I can inform her before Thursday night. So.
I do appreciate that all the, uh, broken links and missing information was provided. So thank you. One at a time, please. Good.
The only thing I have to say is, uh, is communicating to our residents how we're doing this. So that they're, that they're understanding and they won't come at us at a council meeting and.
Correct. And as, as I've mentioned at the last meeting, we've already produced a, a piece, um, for the E news. It'll go in the print news, um, when it goes out in the E news and it's just to give a heads up on the upcoming survey and why we're doing it. And so that will go out, that comes out anytime now, um, and that will go across all of our platforms, um, social media platforms. So yes, and then, um, the reason behind, um, the Loomis group is to have that continuous conversation with the public so that nobody's surprised, at least hopefully.
Um, no, I was just going to sort of reiterate that, um, if, if, if the levy does not turn out to be what council wants, that we can cancel this, uh, contract. But I do want to encourage us to at least get through like the education phase. Um, I think that's valuable for us. So even if we get through the education phase and decide not to go forward with it, um, we've had that rate engagement with our community. And so that's one thing I like about this contract is we can get there and if we communicate there's no way, we can walk away from Liz happily and, um, we're all good.
Yeah. And I, I think you'll find that, you know, her feelings wouldn't be hurt if that was the decision that you made. And that decision is around June of next year, when you have to make that decision and vote as a council, whether to put it on the ballot in November or not. So you've got a lot of time between now and then.
Thank you. And, uh, anybody else have any, uh, comments they want to make? Okay, I guess we'll see you on Thursday then. All right. Thank you so much. Staying here for the next time.
Oh, right.
You have been dismissed. Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Okay. All right. So item C, our final item is, uh, resolution twenty-four dash nineteen seventy-four, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Transpo Group USA Incorporated for a traffic safety study. Authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Transpo Group USA Incorporated for a traffic safety study. And I think, is John Pascal on the line?
Yes, he is on the line to answer any questions that council may have. And then I threw up a map after a phone discussion with. Councilmember Fieratani, Vice Chair, sorry. And so as you remember, we just discussed this last week, bringing this forward to identify some items that were brought up during the council retreat and those were listed as developed speed recommendations for state routes and evaluate possible installation of traffic speed camera locations. Evaluate traffic safety camera locations, specifically a new red light camera parrot SR one oh four and Thirty-Fifth Avenue Northeast and then additional school zone Cameron near Brookside. Elementary as well as a couple of crosswalk locations near one nine one one five Ballenger. And Northeast one seventy-eighth and fortieth Avenue Northeast. And speaking with the Vice Chair today, there have been some questions brought up along one seventy-eighth. If the studies that are being conducted could support possible future camera locations if they were identified along one seventy-eighth. And the two locations that are circled from that discussion are one seventy-eighth and fortieth and then one seventy-eighth and about twenty-eighth. And speaking with John Pascal from Transpo Group today, the information that they're collecting for Northeast one seventy-eighth and fortieth would inform whether traffic cameras make sense at that location. And then he believes and will have to check tomorrow that the previous study they did around the school. Covered all the way up to twenty-eighth, but he was going to look into that. If that's the case, we should be okay for Thursday night. If it didn't cover it, we would have to edit the contract slightly to to look at that and that may change the cost that's identified. So I think the Vice Chair wanted to have that discussion with the rest of council tonight if there's a desire to look at these other locations. And John Pascal is online to answer any questions you may have for him because he will not be available on Thursday night.
Well, thank you, City Administrator, and thank you, Mr. Pascal for joining us. Council, do you have any questions about this?
So I appreciate the suggestion and while I recognize and familiar with those areas, there may be benefits for it. But I do wonder if we are being equitable with regard to how we consider these kinds of actions across the city to say that these are the highest areas that we should consider. I don't want to be in a place where we've used up our opportunities. Such as cameras to influence traffic when we realize that we're not being equitable across the city. So absent really defining, are we being equitable? I'm not sure that I want to add additional areas unless it's just de minimis with the with the other part of the work we're doing. And if we want to consider adding them, I think we need to really look at whether or not we're being equitable.
I would, I mean, in an ideal world, I'd love to look at all of these, but I'm really leaning towards Councilmember Lebo's sort of concern. If it's already been addressed in the prior study, then then let's look at it, I think. The twenty-eighth is 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 a really nice to have, but since the flashing crosswalk, you know, hit the button, it flashes, that's helped a lot. I mean, the the biggest thing is just, you can't go down one seventy-eighth from there, there's just no sidewalk. So I think it's maybe putting a little cart before the horse, I just, we're not having that much foot traffic up there. This is because it's not. It's safe, but I I think if it's already, if we already paid for it, let's look at it, but I don't want to add any scope in this area. Honestly, the the school zone cameras have really helped a lot in just taking down the whole speed of that corridor. I do know that fortieth is a lot of pedestrian access to the parks and the church there, so that could be someplace that could actually really. Get a lot of value, but I'm with, I'm with John on this one, let's be very equitable about where we're spending our money.
And so I'll address the point about the equity and that was my concern too, of course, that there are other parts of the city that could definitely look, get a look at this. This was more for me an opportunity more than anything else, which is that Transpo Group is already doing the work or has done the work. And the question I would pose to Mr. Pascal is, once we have the equity study and your traffic study in hand, how long do we have to act on it if we wanted to put traffic cameras there? Mr. Pascal, you got on mute.
Can, can you all hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sorry about that, sorry I can't be there this evening, thank you for the question. My, I'm I'm not aware of any specific timeline that these studies are good for. I think generally, I think that approach I would take is if there's conditions that would change the results of the study, that's probably when you'd want to update it or or change it and typically, you know, that's going to be for for some time into the future.
All right, well, thank you for that, and so that's, that's my point is that if, you know, for a nominal sum, which we all have different definitions as nominal, of course, but if if basically it's not the cost of a full-blown study. I, you know, having ourselves in a position to be able to approve these cameras if we wish. I, yeah, I thought that was worth the, was worthy about, so that was my only point. Mayor, sorry.
Just as comment on point two, my understanding is the equity study covers the the corridor for for the the radius of half mile either direction already, so the work is already done. And I think your idea, Tracy, of of if it's available for a nominal sum or maybe part of the package, it could make sense.
And and I just want to bring to light again this idea that we should probably as a council, look at the whole community and develop a safety plan related to where we feel needs to be addressed. But yes, for now, if it's already been studied and we have this leveraged existing, you know, spending already, let's take advantage of it. But I really want us to have that time to look at the whole city as a whole as a council and determine where we want to go next.
I agree.
Sorry, sorry.
I agree with Councilmember Riddle.
So the point that I was gonna make, I can check with John tomorrow and see if this can be done within the the scope and fee that is proposed. The other thing I want to check is the mayor's correct, one seventy-eighth has been studied by Eco Northwest on the equitable side of this. But in discussions with them for this next round, there was some discussion of is a per location of cameras review, if they're close enough, they may look at it under one study. And so I would want to make sure that this location is is proximate enough to the one they've already studied, that there wouldn't be additional costs. Because that would be something I would want to report to you on Thursday as well.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any thoughts about this?
Um, switching gears slightly, I just want to thank John for the response about what sort of speed limit information would be considered and presented. You know, acknowledging that Wash Dot has their own policies and even if they haven't adopted NACTA, that doesn't stop us from saying, well, here's what Wash Dot methodology says, but also here's what the city would like to see, so I appreciate that hybrid approach.
All right, so do we have enough information to bring this back on Thursday? Okay, great, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Pascal as well.
Thank you.
All right, seeing there is no further business of, oh, sorry.
I I do just want to highlight, we have a series of special meetings that are coming at times, we're not typical. So just take a look at your backside of your agenda and refresh your memory so we don't accidentally, you don't miss any of those meetings, they're all very important.
Very good, thanks for the reminder, yeah, because it's pretty thick, so. All right, so we're, we're looking forward to see you on Thursday, so I'll adjourn the meeting.